One more, Z seventeen twenty-nine, Ram Realty Investments, Eight Ten Harrison Street. The applicant, our representative here.
Yeah, give me a second.
You've got two seconds, let's go. Counselor, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Rob Fleming, Fleming and Fleming. I wasn't expecting to be called to serve a little bit to thank you. Appreciate that. I represent a couple of gentlemen from Ram Realty Investments LLC, Matthew Kinch, Tori Kelleher. They own the property at Eight Harrison Street at Quincy Point. The site itself is about an eighty-two-hundred-square-foot site located in a Residence B zoning district and currently approved by a non-conforming, single-family residence. My clients are proposing to add a second home, which will be connected to the existing, single-family residence, as well as just expanding, adding a dormer, dormer roofs to the existing, single-family home as well. So, again, the property is located in a Residence B zoning district, which does allow for, you know, multi-family residences. Okay? They are adding just this one second unit to that. They will be providing four parking spaces to the home as well. So, important for me to point out to the board...
They're adding four, or they're gonna have four?
There'll be four parking spaces to the rear of the new home with driveway, one single driveway for access to the rear of the property. Those places, those spaces will be conforming with respect to size of those spaces, as well as setbacks for both the home itself, as well as the property lines. The home, you know, further, you know, meets all the dimensional requirements, you know, in this Residence B district. It will meet the FAR, the two homes combined. It will meet all setbacks, you know, other than the non-conforming setback for the existing home. Lot size per unit, frontage, open space, height, and the parking, as I indicated. With me this evening, I do have both my clients, Mr. Kelleher and Mr. Kinch, as well as our civil engineer, Scott Henderson. You know, Scott has designed, and he'll, I don't want to get too much, I get sometimes comments, the attorney's gonna want too much about stuff we don't understand.
Can I do that?
Yeah. So, I'll let him speak with respect to those things. For the record, Scott Henderson, Henderson Consulting, Mr. Rob said, the civil engineer of the project.
Anderson.
What was that?
Anderson.
Quincy, Mass., one forty-four Washington Street, Quincy's. So, as Rob said, we have an existing, single-family home on the property on the right-hand side. This is effectively a double lot that existed in common ownership. So, it's about twice the size of most of the lots up and down the street. The proposal is to add a second attached unit to this existing home, and then add a second story via a shed dormer on the second floor to this unit to add square footage. We have an existing curb cut that's sort of in the center of the lot now. We're gonna relocate that to the left side to provide a single driveway access up the side of the site to four parking spaces at the rear to screen those from the road. There is, in the existing condition, a shed and a detached garage in the rear of the property. Those will both be demolished and removed. In total, we're looking at a net increase of impervious area, just shy of seven-hundred square feet. Currently, there are no stormwater controls on the property, and we're proposing roof infiltration to capture runoff from both roofs, the roofs of both units, into the backyard to infiltrate those into the ground. We've gone through full review with the city engineer and received approval. The board should have a letter from the city engineer noting that. And as Rob said, there's nothing that we're looking for, any sort of variance or anything for parking or any of the layout, and other utilities are fairly standard.
What do you have for the outside of the building? What's going on the outside of that building?
We're rendering here from the architect. The architect wasn't able to attend tonight. So, the existing structure here, we're adding that shed dormer, and then the new unit is a comfortable design enassing.
What's on the outside of the building? What are you putting there, platform, vinyl?
It'll be vinyl siding. Please, for the Rock, please.
Are you gonna use acoustical? Are you gonna use the nice ones, or just straight plain vinyl? Are you gonna use, like, impressions?
Yeah, it'll have an impression. I have a wood grain look, but in vinyl siding.
So, you're just using regal vinyl, not using impressions?
Correct.
Okay, a three-tier, they look like rail shingles?
Correct, this'll just be your standard vinyl siding.
You know, when you're building a house brand-new like that, why can't you make the front of it with impressions? Make it a nice-looking building, the front at least, instead of vinyl? You just don't get it for the cost. You have that look five times better than wood on that street. You know what I mean? You're building something in the neighborhood.
Sure. I think there'll be some consideration given there as well. I think, I think the material they're using is certainly, you know, the kind of a maintenance-free, you know, material.
It is, they are, but what is, is it so much per square foot more, probably three times the cost, put in front of the buildings? Not a ton of money when you're building two buildings that size. To put impressions in, make it look like they're shingles, but they're plastic, and it just makes the neighborhood look a lot better. And it makes that project look a lot better than vinyl siding, I guess.
Seen the cedar impression.
Yeah. Vinyl siding blows my mind. It's just like, it's just, I don't know, people build something brand-new. I could see covering a house, just getting it over with, flipping it, whatever you're gonna do. And I don't know if you guys are gonna flip this or not, and there's a difference, but the people that are behind are gonna be there, and I think it'd be nice to have something nice on the outside.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think, you know, all of that was taken into consideration, you know. This is not, you know, trying to push the envelope at all. You know, it's an eighty-two-hundred-square-foot site. They wanted to comply, they wanted to, you know, build something that would, you know, kind of fit in with the rest of the neighborhood, you know, with respect to the style, the size of these homes. The existing is a two-bedroom. Obviously, the one they're building is a three-bedroom, because that's what sells, you know, three-bedrooms today. But I think the size overall, you know, they want to kind of stay in conformity.
Did you tell me you're gonna put cedar impressions in the farmer's building?
Can't make that call. I mean, certainly, you know, they'll take under advisement and consider it. Would it be something you guys consider?
I have not used them before, so I'll just look into how the builder can contain them and get them hung, and if they fit within the budget, I'd be...
Same place where you're gonna buy your vinyl?
I'd be happy to use cedar impressions if they fit within our budget.
My answer, I guess you're gonna deny it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, we, I did speak with, you know, Constable Crowell as well. We did have a neighborhood meeting, because, I think, because of the size of the project. However, obviously, notice was sent out to many of the neighbors, you know, for this hearing. There were, I understand, there's a few neighbors here tonight. A couple of questions I have answered, you know, for them. Certainly, there'll be some more questions for you, with some, or some comments. But again, we're requesting to do this is really just a finding. You know, again, if this proposal will not be substantially more detrimental than what's existing today. We don't think it is, you know, none of our relief, we have to seek for setbacks in FAR and parking. This is not in a way where they meet, where they meet everything.
Thank you, Counsel. Any questions?
How do you propose to split them, to sell them independently?
You know, for these two, because they are connected, they will have to go through, you know, condominium. You know, and they will be condominiums. Townhouses, more or less. You know, they look like, single-family homes, so, again, fit in with the neighborhood, but they will be condominiums.
Thank you, Counsel.
Do you have a question? Thank you. So, anyone wanna speak in favor? Anyone wanna speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call? Close.
Thank you.
I gotta let it hit the DPW there. We do the above- referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed to run the siding? Step forward, state name and address. And why don't we just line up, there's a bunch of them. Anyone wants to speak out, just one down?
My name is George Folsom, Twenty-Four Curtis Avenue. Been there over sixty years. Okay. The street, Harrison Street, I live on the corner of Curtis and Harrison. My garage comes out on Harrison Street, behind my house. Now, it's bad enough the way it is now. Harrison Street turns into a dead-end street. There's an awful lot of two-family houses on that street. Believe me when I tell you, the street is much narrower than Curtis Avenue is. And they're constantly parking their cars. Every one of those houses have driveways. For some reason, I'm seeing reason, people are parking on the street, and it becomes a horror show. If anything bad ever happens down there, I know I've seen ambulances come in, had to wait to get to houses. Fire trucks, forget that, okay? But that, that street is heavily traveled. Now, I see them gonna build a house, a house that they're talking about. I knew the people lived there for the last hundred years. Anyway, I don't have any problem with them putting a dormer on the existing house. That's either here or there. But adding that house, attaching it to this other house, is only a way of getting to a situation they can't build, because they don't have the land to build that house by itself. So, to get around it, they've connected it to the other house. And that leaves the property on the other side. They have to take out the garage, there's a thing, to get parking. And here's the biggest joke of all. The driveway is right in front of my driveway of my garage. When I come out, what's gonna happen is there's gonna be cars from that, those apartments, not parking the parking lot inside the back of the thing, they're gonna park on the streets. Why do I say that? Because if you look at the map, and you have what they're building, the driveway is ten feet wide. So, if there's five or six cars in those buildings, why are they gonna take time, turns to come out one at a time? They're gonna park on the street. You can't, and the thing is, if they park on the street, I'm gonna be the guy that calls up every other day and says, "Send a towing truck down here." Because I've gotta get out. One of the things I have, Apollo, is my wife has leukemia. I have to be able to leave and go into Boston at different times. If they're in my way, there's gonna be a lot of problems. I just, I don't understand. Well, I know why they did it. I can understand that. The man that had the house gave it to his daughter, who in turn gave it to the grandson. He renovated the interior beautifully of the existing house, and then he sold it. Well, he's evidently in the business for making money, and he's done the right thing, okay? But when this came in, and when they came in with that, I can understand. They put in a dormer, and the property was all taken care of, new driveways, everything was done perfectly. And they saw that, and I'm sure he made a nice profit out of it. He needed that, or that, and then I, I can see a tremendous problem with the traffic on that street. It's bad enough now, because everybody has two or three cars in all those houses. I can stand out on the corner of my eye, and it's like being out on a walking foot street. There's a steady line of traffic. So, I'm telling, I'm telling you now, if he, if they do this and put that second house on, there's gonna be a lot of problems.
Thank you, Folsom.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Pitts. I live at fifteen Harrison Street. I'm opposed to the second home for the fact that, number one, safety, ambulances and fire trucks will never get down that street, because George is right, they will park. A good example, Christmas night, I'm a nurse, I work twelve hours. I try to get home, Christmas night, cars were parked on both sides of the street, people were visiting. A guy came out, started screaming, yelling at me, refused to move the vehicle right away. I couldn't even get down Harrison Street. I had to call the police, and to be able to get into my house, and the guy was harassing me so bad. So, I'm thinking, you're gonna add another house with a tiny little driveway. Those people aren't gonna be able to get in and out, there's a tiny driveway there. And there's absolutely no way I've got enough coops bar or morgue to deal with. You can't even get down Lebanon Street on a Friday and Saturday night. The police just close their eyes to it, it's insane. So, I call them all the time, they do nothing. So, now, you're gonna add this on to Harrison Street, the traffic, this one guy, every night, the parks a black car on the street. You can barely get down the street, either day or night. So, if you're gonna add this, you're gonna add four more cars, and George is right, you're gonna be all over the street. And the police are gonna come down, close their eyes, and do nothing about it, as usual. So, so that's why I'm opposed to it.
Big tag down there?
No, they have a, in coops bar, forget it, they just completely close their eyes, in the driveway. They think I'm not gonna call all the time. I've been doing this for years. And because I drive a Hummer, and I'm supposed to be punished, you know? So, anyway, so that's why I'm opposing. I'm all for a one-home, fine, but two homes and four cars, there's no way. And I could barely get on my driveway as it is now, if there's a car parked across my driveway at that house. So, that's my issue.
Thanks.
Tom Pepper, I'm at twenty-seven Harrison Street, been there for over sixty years. Harrison Street is a narrow street, always had parking problems. They're making improvements to the forefield, which is gonna draw more cars down there. There are multi-families at one end. And this only has a single driveway. And with two families, that's gonna force some of the guests to park on the street, because they don't wanna get trapped in a single driveway. I'm opposed to this project because of the parking.
Thank you, Mr. Pepper. Anyone else?
Hi, Sandra Mucci. I'm at sixteen Harrison Street. I'm not gonna reiterate the same thing, but the parking, of course, is the ultimate concern.
Who's your last name?
Mucci, I'm Mucci, C.C.I. My other concern, I am, the house directly next door, the property line is eighteen inches off of that property line, or the house itself. So, I guess I do have a concern that now my backyard is gonna face parking spaces. So, I don't know, you know, I didn't have time to find out, is, will there be fence, or whatever? But, you know, going from having backyard facing brass and backyard now to having parking spaces, and of course, the biggest problem is the parking as it exists on Harrison Street. I'm opposed.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposing on the side? Counselor?
Wait, I hear a phone call.
Right.
John Oderfeld, excuse me, I'm on the road, real quick. What's it on, like, a foot, foot and a half from the other side right now? It's like, from, from the right side of the house?
Seven feet.
It's seven feet, and you adding up, are you going up on that side, too?
Uh, no.
No.
The gable won't stay the same, it just, shed dormers up the front and the back.
But it is residential.
Not, not high.
Are we residential B, though?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just gonna simply say, moratorium, residential B, this is a great reason why we need to, you know, we're gonna keep getting developers that keep coming in here until we fix this.
Wouldn't apply to this stuff.
Whoa, 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 that's, all right.
Well, the main thing is, is this, this is just too big. They're all small, single-family houses on that street. This does not fit in at all with that street, and the neighbors are clearly against it, so I would ask that the board please vote this project out. Thank you.
Thank you, John. John, have you been on that street?
Have I been there?
Yeah.
Not tonight, I wasn't.
Is there anyone else opposing on the side, Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this will be the last time you see me this evening. I promise. Yeah, just to echo the sentiment of what was shared here this evening, I mean, you missed the Perro, and Miss Mucci, Mr. Folsom, and Miss Pitts, I mean, long-time residents, we live here. I'll be honest with you, this, this project never excited me in the, in the first place. Quite honestly, I don't really see the value that it brings to the neighborhood. But what really kind of raised my antenna, and I appreciate you. I appreciate you asking and advocating for aesthetic improvements to any, whether it's Quincy Point or Pennsyl, section of my district, I appreciate that. The rebuttal of, you know, whether or not it fits my budget, I just feel is, like, completely unacceptable. And I kind of thought about... Take it under advisement. Take it under advisement. My wife would love to travel around the world, you know my answer to hers? Take it under advisement. Take it under advisement. So, I mean, I, I don't know. Without running the risk of reiterating what was already said here by the residents, it's a tight neighborhood, Mr. Chairman, you were down there, I know you do your diligence on every item that comes in this agenda. There's, if that's not done properly, there's nowhere to put any overflow. That's an already existing problem. So, ball's, ball's important, right?
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond, real quick, I know you have a, you have a tight agenda, and I understand that...
Yes, I know you've been dying to drop in.
Thank you for letting me. With, I'll respond to Mrs. Mucci first, because she's certainly the most impacted, being right next door. Which is up to, to the border between seven feet, you know, to her, to the property line, is the existing home. My clients are willing to do almost anything. She'd like to see, whether it be a fence, a vegetation, that would be fine. Yes, and that's what you may see, you know, but they have very intention of doing some landscaping and nice border on, on really, on really both sides. With respect to the parking and the issues on Harrison Street, that's how these things are approached, you know, in development. You're looking at those things, and you're trying to pull all parking off of the street. My clients have done that here, you know? They, they are building this thing and are complying with the parking that's required. What we're seeking here is a finding. That's all we're seeking. Everything is by rights, you know, with respect to the dimensional requirements of the ordinance. Just a finding, you know? The board finding that this particular proposal will not be substantially more detrimental than what's existing today. We're providing the required parking, you know? Will there be guests? There's a guest for any home, you know? One unit addition to this property is not gonna exacerbate the conditions down on Harrison Street.
And I know you say that, Counsel, I'm one person, I have three vehicles. That's me, just me. It's just life, that's life today. People have all the one kinds. They have a truck, they have a car, they have motorcycles.
I'm not asking for a lease.
I'm not saying, I'm just saying... No, no. But, but, you know, what, what they're saying is you're putting in another, you know, another three bedrooms, and you get a couple of, five bedrooms, what does that equal and really count? Oh, six? But you're, you're going by the yard, I get that. I get the trust, believe me, I get it.
I just wanted to point out the board's role here, you know? That it's, it's a finding, it's not a dimensional relief that we're seeking. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I didn't get the answer that I wanted in the beginning, which makes me think, I don't know what else could happen in that lot, really. And right now, I'm not, I'm not comfortable voting on this right now. I think, maybe they can come back with two splits, maybe a house on the left, house on the right, I don't know. And, and better parking. Parking behind the house, I hate it, I just hate it, I do hate it, I just hate it. It just don't work, it just doesn't work. It's like, no, you're not. It was already passed up. No thanks, but it's my turn. I, I just, I don't feel comfortable the way that layout is, even though for that piece of property, it's probably the best you're gonna get down there for that piece of parking, seriously? But the parking, I hate it, I just hate it. Driving behind the building makes it tough. People going in the house twenty minutes, they don't. They're going for an hour, I'm gonna go up, they don't bother you, it just happens.
Well, you know, what I find amazing about this city is that you have so many streets like this street all over the city.
All over.
And I go to the property this morning, and I'm looking at it, and I realize I didn't park close enough myself, and I'm blocking the street. I'm blocking the street, which is not a good thing to do. And you think, well, it's a small street, no one's gonna really come down the street. Right now, what's the tip? They always do. There's always someone coming by. The city is twenty-four-seven, it's, it's, it's... I don't mind parking behind the building, because I think, you know, I, I think that's okay.
If they do.
If, if the angular, I don't really see, for example, the plan, do we have a turning radius to actually get into?
There is, it's plenty, and Scott can give it a little further, do we have the compliant eighteen-foot parking spaces? So, there is plenty of room for not only vehicles, but also a snowplow, you know, for somebody who goes well to pull in there.
Well, I would, I think what I would like to say, and this, I'm just one person, I would like to see, you guys figure out what you're gonna put on the front of these buildings, the chairman mentioned, in your budget.
I've consulted with my clients, they will do the cedar impression.
I, I don't understand why you have to have them connected, really. Why do you have them connected?
Well, they, they looked at, you know, doing separate, single-family homes, you know, and because of the width of the entire lot, and being able to have a dedicated driveway for each, made it, made it difficult or impossible to do that, you know? So, this is really an expansion of a non-conforming residence, you know, seeking the finding. If we were to subdivide the lots of two, single-family homes, it'd be a lot of dimensional relief that would need to be requested. Considering it's a Residence B district, you know, this is, this is permitted, you know, to do it just, just that way, you know? But, Mr. Chairman, if it comes down to aesthetics, that's on the table.
I think it's important, and we're gonna start looking at that, from not having people build stuff that just didn't walk away.
I agree. See, people have different tastes, you know, some like the siding.
Side the dollar shop, what happened down there, what they did? It was like bizarro, bizarro, what you made of it. I'm looking at that, and I go, oh my God.
But, Mr. Gavais, yeah, the turning radius is there, you know, for, you know, for easy access for a teenager.
Just they gotta do with it, and it's gonna park.
Well, do you think we should, okay, no, pardon? I was gonna say, do you think we should bring this back and maybe see? I'm not sure what we're gonna see.
No, maybe you can go and look at the lot again, make sure you get what you know, right there. Because I tell you, there is a lot of two families down there, some bigger buildings. This is not a big building, the one, when they're gonna attach it, it's not gonna be no big, big buildings like this. It's not, it's probably the best look for that lot, I agree, for what's there. For what's down there, and what, what they're gonna build, do you wrap the whole building and go up three stories? And make, take every square inch that they can?
They could do that.
And make three units all the way up, and just redo the whole thing?
Which they have a right to do.
Right. You could move this building, and you could do that, you could put your six bots in the back, and you could move it over further. You could. For that place, that's probably the best-looking building someone could come up with for that lot, I would say. You gotta build in a two-family residence, a Residence B. You get two stories, the pitch of the roofs are beautiful, they're not, there's no seven-twelve roofs that you're looking at, these big giant peak roofs, A-frame roofs, and the height is there and everything. It's just comments.
Further, I, I agree, I'd like to look at it again from the residence perspective with the turning. When I was there yesterday, I, I passed it, and I didn't go all the way down to the end, which is on me, I should. And I made a U-turn, and two houses down, which I could barely accomplish. So, I'd like to go back and look again.
You gotta go a little further down.
Yeah, I'd like to go back down and, and look. Right, the parking for the field, is they, they pack on that side to use the field?
Right.
You understand that?
So... Well, the bit, the... Yeah, the way that it's configured right now, if you're going down Harrison Street, you can basically catch, catch parking on that side of the clubhouse.
Okay.
The playground, there's been iterations and talks about how they may or may not try to manufacture some new parking with the progress of the field, but still up in the air, right? Because concepts are just concepts.
Right, oh, yeah, no, I agree, I just, I was curious if, with the, with the work they're gonna do down there, if they included parking on it.
It was, it's been talked about, but the parking primarily would be on the section of Nevada Road, actually, if you face, or clubhouse, so it would be, you're looking at the entrance, it would actually be to the right. They cut in some of the air, potentially on Beechwood. What they'll end up doing on Harrison is nothing for my, my estimation at the right now. But it's a funding issue that we're kinda...
now, but it's a funding issue that we're kinda marking through, as you probably saw the orange construction guns. I could bore you with details, but I may have to get down, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I know, you wanna wait a couple weeks?
I was there this week and I found it, it, it's a tight neighborhood, you're right, the parking seems awfully tight, but it's, it's not a bad design, but yeah, I think
it needs to be revisited as well.
All right. Motion, what do you want? Two weeks, I'm not gonna be here next meeting.
Let's go, Walker.
Four weeks? You guys give us some sort of landscape plan?
Absolutely, yeah, and we could, yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll have my clients speak with Ms. Muji as well, you know, her side, and I forgot the gentleman's name on the other side as well, and have a little more dialogue with respect to that, and see what we can do for some landscape design on both of those sides. And even in the rear as well, I know there's a fence in the rear of the property, and there's proposed one on the driveway side, Mrs. Muji's side as well, they could do the same, same fence on that side. We'll, we'll speak with her as well.
April 25th, please.
This is Chairman, amount of the Z17 dash 29, Grand Real Estate Investment LLC for a various buying, structure, single-family load to the attached, the existing, single-family load, for a total of two working hours on the premises, number 810 Harrison Street, you could give a note that you adhere to.
April 25th. Second. On the motion CNN, all in favor? Opposed, promote.